There's nobody in the council chambers. So to get started, I'll do a roll call of commission members.
Commissioner Helfry.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cohen.
Here.
Commissioner Broyles.
Here.
Commissioner Beatty.
Here.
Commissioner Duppler, Commissioner Jackson, Chair Lee.
Present.
Council member Bros. Mayor Bowlin.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, tonight's agenda, we'll have the approval of the minutes. The department will have opening remarks and then we'll have our public comment session. There is no public hearing scheduled for tonight. We have two items on old business. And actually, two items for new business, correspondence items, plus a year recap of what we're doing for the planning commission. So, let's see, moving on to the approval of the minutes from Monday, November 16th. I have a motion to approve. Commissioner Helfry, motion, I need a second. Commissioner Broyles. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Minutes are approved. Moving on to the department, Mr. Vunich, would you have any opening remarks?
Just one, sir. On my screen down in the lower left corner is a kind of new face. His name is Steve Cross. He's our interim city administrator. And so I just wanted to acknowledge him. And if any of you don't know him, he is again our interim city administrator, Steve Cross. So thanks for attending.
Thank you. Moving on to the public comment session, Mr. Newberry, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have one virtual hand raised. It's going to be Dr. Allen. We'll begin to let her in.
Okay, well, this actually is better. You don't have to look up at my nose tonight, which is what usually happens when I'm at the city. You're going to be discussing the five-year capital improvement plan. And I was going over it today. And I have some problems, which I'm sure other people in citizens, if they were aware, would have some problems as well. You have an appropriation, actually not for this coming year, but for the following '22, '23, and '24, for the Strecker Road sidewalk segment EF. I don't really know what that is. But I would think that that should be something that should be kind of spelled out for those of us that want to look over this, so that we know what the proposal is. But more concerning than that is a $235,000 appropriation for next year for the Strecker Road sidewalk construction. There's no designation as to what part of this sidewalk you're referring to. You know, all total, it was over a million-dollar deal. I'm assuming, because I've kind of been following this along, that this is the sidewalk that's proposed on the Callahan property. That does need to be spelled out. And I do want you to know that I'm not anti-sidewalk, quite the contrary. But we have a really problematic area here that is my concern. So anyway, we don't know anything about this $235,000 that's been appropriated for next year's sidewalk. The citizens haven't been given any details. There are no details on this. We were told, if this is in fact the Callahan property, that this was going to be a simple overlay of concrete. No disruption of the land, but clearly, $235,000 is considerable. And I'd like, and I think you should as well, as Planning and Zoning Commission, would want to know exactly what this money is to be allocated for. We know that before, the city has written some indications that they wanted to place monitoring wells. And I'd like to know, is that part of this $235,000 for a sidewalk? And really, a sidewalk that goes nowhere. It doesn't, it ends at two other people's lawns. And if this in fact is the Callahan Superfund site, this is an area that's never been tested. It's an area where all of the trucks and, you know, wherever Bliss and Callahan used to dump their toxins crossed these areas. We also know that Bliss was a great sprayer of dioxin-contaminated waste oil to keep the dust down. And dioxin doesn't go away, and it bioaccumulates. It is a carcinogen, and there were also 200 other chemicals that were highlighted on these pieces of property. So it's a worrisome piece of property. It's a worrisome project. And my interest is, why doesn't the city just build across the street? People are perfectly fine walking on that flat right-of-way that the city owns. We've been told that there's a problem with a cemetery there. But I also know someone that was there when they did the ground penetrating radar to highlight the cemetery. And that there were in fact bodies under Strecker Road, and they popped up on the other side of Strecker on the Callahan property. And if you're not aware of this cemetery, this is a Civil War cemetery. This is the family plot of Reinhardt Strecker, who was a Civil War veteran. So I think clearly, you know, Strecker Road runs on top of the cemetery. So all due respect has not been given him. But I would think that the city would want to know exactly who and where and what is there. And certainly not desecrated any more than it has been. So that's really what I want to say about that. I don't see how this should be appropriated for next year. You know, if you want to put a sidewalk in, you got to do a Phase 1, you got to do a Phase 2. You need to know what's underneath there. This is going to be a huge disruption of that land. You're going to have to rearrange pipes and everything. And I want to speak to you just briefly about the presentation that Dr. Hammer gave two weeks ago. It was an enormously important presentation, and his warning to the city is dire. If the city was truly concerned for its citizens, there would be a halt on all construction, except for that that's essential. That the mere act of construction destroys what lies underneath us. And to do any type of construction, especially in this area of the Wildwood Superfund sites, is reckless. The addition of the sidewalk is going to add to runoff. The subsurface will be further degraded by heavy equipment. And there is nowhere for the water to go, except through the tributary that drains Callahan's property, which was where all of this, all of these toxins went downstream. It will go underneath Timber Ridge and into Cox Creek, which will cause further degradation. And then the only other thing I want to comment about is you're going to be looking at the SCODE. The city was really quick to want to pass it, and now nothing's going to be done until January. And the SCODE has been a real concern for us, because we don't know how that's going to affect our property. So anyway, I hope that you consider this before you send this to council. I realize you're not a done deal, but you are the Planning Commission, and you are going to be looking at this five-year capital improvement plan tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Newberry.
Mr. Lee, we do have several in attendance, so we just want to give the instruction once more. If you'd like to speak during the public comment session, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or put a comment in the chat. And Kathy, I will let you in to address the commission. Mr. Lee, I'm not seeing any raised hand or any chats.
Okay. Well, let's move on to old business. Mr. Newberry, are you reading PZ 13-20?
Yes, sir, thank you. PZ 13-20, Mark Nancy Fish, 1570 Old State Road, Wildwood, Missouri, 63038. Care of some ProSolar MCH Road, Mandeville, Louisiana, 70471. Request for a conditional use permit in the NU Non-Urban Residence District. Street address 1570 Old State Road, locator number 25U440043 for the installation of roof-mounted solar panels, which are to be so situated on the dwelling and accessory structure garage as to be visible from adjoining roadways. This request is to be reviewed in accordance with Chapter 415.090 NU Non-Urban Residence District Regulations of the City of Wildwood Zoning Ordinance, which establishes standards and requirements for the installation of solar panels. The requested permit is required due to the panel's placement on the front-facing area of the roofs of the dwelling and accessory structure, Ward 6.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, Joe.
Yes.
I just saw one of the participants online in chat indicated that, I think it's a she, that she wanted to speak relative to the Montessori issue that's later on the agenda. But she would need to do that during public participation. So if we have someone who wants to speak on that, we might want to handle that before we go on with the agenda.
That would be fine. Mr. Newberry.
I can promote her, I believe she's the petitioner. Not just a public comment. So you tell me.
That's up to her. I mean, she can speak now if she wants.
Again, Mr. Chair, I think it's up to the discretion of you if you'd like her to speak now or wait until the department presents the report, so she can comment.
Let's wait, if that's the case. We will wait. Okay. All right, so let's go back to where we were. Mr. Vunich.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as you may recall, at our last meeting on November 16th, the department presented its information report with recommendation on this matter. The matter was postponed to allow for better information to be developed regarding the potential impact of the solar panels facing the two adjoining roadways, one public, Old State Road, and the other private. With the permission of the Chair, Mr. Newberry will share a screen, and then I will narrate a set of photographs that were taken last week relative to the property. I think a key concern among the commission members relative to this request related to the fact that many of the photographs and other information that had been provided up to the point of that November 16th meeting was during the summer months. And so from that perspective, the trees were fully leafed. Everything that would bloom had bloomed. And so there was a concern that we weren't seeing a true 12-month picture of what the potential for this set of solar energy, this solar energy system might cause. And so again, the department was more than happy to go out there to the site and take some photographs. And hopefully, these photographs will suffice to help you in understanding the conditions. Mr. Newberry. Well, with that expression, Mr. Newberry is obviously having a little trouble sharing the screen.
Give me one moment, it's not cooperating.
It acted like it wanted to work, and then nothing happened.
I should have kept my mouth shut and let the screen take center stage.
That should be successful.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Newberry. Again, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the intent of the photographs is to help you understand the current conditions. And so what the Department of Planning did is, we started on Old State Road back at the first driveway down from the intersection of the private street and the public street. And just walked on both sides of the road toward the, what I call, the east and then to the northeast to kind of bring it into perspective. And so here, this is on Old State Road, looking to the northeast. The subject site is in the center of the photograph. And again, you can see the detached garage and then the dwelling to the left. And so this image is the farthest from the site. So here, I've crossed the street, that street being Old State Road, but just did a parallel from the previous spot. Again, looking toward the east and the subject site. And as you can see, didn't intentionally stand behind the tree, but there are a couple of large trees there that obscure the view a bit. The next photograph, I've stepped closer to the subject site, still on this, on Old State Road, now on the opposite side, or south side of Old State Road, looking to the east and again at the subject property. The next slide, I will cross Old State Road. I'm away from the tree mass, and now you can see better the subject property and the improvements on the property, the buildings and structures. The next slide, I've basically come up to the last of the caution arrows. So again, on the south side of Old State Road, looking to the northeast. And I think this gives you a pretty clear view at a close proximity to the subject site. And then the next slide, I cross Old State Road again. And then on that curve, the south side, excuse me, the north side of Old State Road, looking to the east at the subject property. As you can see, there are some large trees, both disisuous and evergreen. And then in the background, you can see the dwelling, the taller of the structures, and then the detached garage area. This is a view of the property from Eagle Ridge Drive, excuse me, Road. And this is looking to the east-northeast. So this is the intersection of the private street with Old State Road. On the next slide, I've gone directly across the street. So now I would say I'm on the west side of Old State Road as it makes the turn, looking directly east. And then the next slide, our photograph, pardon me. I've actually walked down Old State Road in an opposite direction from where I started. And I'm at the nearest dwelling on Old State Road on the opposite side of the street. And this is looking more toward the south now at the subject property. The dwelling and improvements are in the, what I would call, the left side of the slide. Thank you, Mr. Newberry. The next slide, I just again kind of walk up Old State Road toward the private street and the intersection and just give you some images in that perspective. And again, this is about midway. Next slide, I'm a little closer to the center of the property and looking toward the southeast. And then this is more of a close-up to give you a perspective of existing tree land, existing woodlands. And then, as the petitioners noted, they've installed some evergreen trees. And I think this is a good representation of what those trees look like. And then, this is just kind of a close-up to give you an idea of the roof pitches associated with the improvements. The house has a very steep pitch to its roof, whereas the detached garage has more of a low pitch or lesser pitch. And I believe that's, and then the last slide, or the last couple of slides, is just again on the private street, away from the intersection and the view that people coming up Eagle Ridge Road would see as they were nearing Old State Road. And then this, the other, the previous slide was just an aerial photograph of the property. And then again here, you can see how the layout of the proposed solar energy system and the panels is planned. And Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the department hopes those photographs are helpful. As the department noted on November 16th, it has reviewed this request and was supportive of the commission, considering favorably the conditional use permit request and granting to permit to the petitioners. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll conclude. And if there's any questions or comments, I'd be glad to try to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. I'll open this up for discussion or a motion, entertain a motion. Commissioner Beatty.
I'll move to support the department's recommendation.
Okay, we motion on the floor to approve. Second, Commissioner Cohen. Second. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll go into a roll call vote. Commissioner Helfry.
So normally, when we consider these solar panels, we consider what can be seen from the street. And it looks to me that almost all of the panels will be facing the street, and there's a lot of tree coverage. Will those trees end up blocking the sun hitting those panels? Am I making sense? Will they interfere, will they become a problem in the future? Or then it comes up where it has to be cut down?
Again, in the conditions associated with the department's recommendation, we have information relating to tree removal, particularly toward the grand trees. But Mr. Ingram, the representative from the solar panel installer, is on the call tonight. And he may be able better to answer your question regarding the impact of the existing woodlands on the production of energy from the solar panels.
Mr. Ingram.
Good evening.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, how are you? That's a great question. And all of our design was taken with those trees and the heights of those trees in account. And with the bulk of those trees already being at mature height, fully mature height, we don't anticipate them growing anymore or have any discussions with the owner about removing any of those trees in the future, only because we've designed the system to those trees. And with those trees in place, knowing that they won't be removed.
And with the permission, sorry, with the permission of the Chair, Ms. Helfry, the specific condition is on page 18 of the report number six.
Mayor Bowlin.
So as I mentioned at the last meeting, I'm going to abstain from this because I'm friends with the officials. But I have a question, and that is, is there any condition in, given the proximity of the home to the residence, to a major thoroughfare, Old State Road, is there any provision in the approval of this that if any of the trees that are presently there are removed or die, that there will be replacement trees so that it avoids a situation where there could be no trees there? And the panels on the front of the home approved, is there any? I mean, I get the proviso relative to the grand tree, but I'm talking about all of the shielding that the commission currently sees. Is it possible under the current recommendation that that could be at some point, for whatever reason, gone? And if that's the case, would we want to include a provision that that they would need to be replaced? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you are absolutely right. Relative to grand trees, there is a restoration requirement. But those that would not be considered grand trees, if they were removed because they died or were damaged by act of God, there is no provision. So certainly, you could add that any tree that provides current screening is lost, that it'd have to be replaced.
Commissioner Helfry.
Is there a way to say that we, that in the future, we don't want any less plantings than there are now? That there can be more, but there should not be less?
Certainly, there's many ways, I think, to describe what the mayor just set forth and what you've kind of voiced as well. And so certainly, as long as the department's clear and there's a majority of the commission members that support it, we'll make sure that what's there is preserved and what, if anywhere to be removed, for whatever reason, is replaced. And that we retain a net or no-loss scenario.
Can we have a motion to act on that? As we have a motion and a second to approve the department's recommendations.
May I make a point that the owner did?
Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Ingram, the Chair is asking for a motion. And so once that's done, we can hear your point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'll make
Commissioner Helfry, okay.
I'll make the motion to amend that so that we address the screening issues for future.
Okay. Joe, do you want to write something down and then read it back to us?
Well, I could certainly try, but I think the gist of the matter is is that any existing vegetation that would be removed, for whatever reason, would be replaced in terms of number and at a size that would ensure mortality, something akin to that. I don't think we can replace a large tree with an equally large tree, but we want to make sure we get a good tree that will survive and add to the screening as quickly as possible.
Okay, I have a motion, I need a second for the amendment. Commissioner Broyles, second. Let's go back and vote on the, how should we do this? The amendment and then the motion? Are we going to just go ahead and, yes? So let's vote on the amendment. I think we can do a
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Do you want to let Mr. Ingram speak on the motion to amend?
We can. Go ahead, Mr. Ingram.
Oh, I just wanted to point out that the owner did, it was pointed out that the owner has planted some new trees. And the owner did want to point out that they had planted eight Norway spruces that were eight foot tall and three Arvivide Green Giants that were seven foot tall. And those were planted in 2018. And they had the anticipation of being, of growing two to three feet per year. And I think their intent was that, that was not only to help add to the shielding, you know, down at the street level, but that you know, down at the street level, but that those would be able to then, in the event that something should happen to one of the older, more mature trees, especially the, the firs that are out there, that these trees, these newer ones would be already in place and beginning to take shape to be able to, you know, essentially compensate for the loss of one or two just due to age.
Thank you. That's understood. All right. We'll vote on the amendment. Let's do a voice vote on that. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Staying.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right. So we have a motion to accept the department's recommendations and a second with the amended statement on the trees. That will be a roll call vote. Mr. Newberry.
Commissioner Helfrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Broyles?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Mayor Boland?
Staying.
Okay, passes. Um, moving on, Mr. Newberry, are you reading PZ 11 dash 20?
Yes, sir. Thank you. PZ 11 dash 20, Monarch Fire Protection District, care of FGM Architects, Inc., One Metropolitan Square, Suite 1945, St. Louis, Missouri, 63102. A request for a conditional use permit in the NU non-urban residence district for a three acre tract of land that is located on the south side of Wild Horse Creek Road at its intersection with Etherington Road. Street address is 18304 Wild Horse Creek Road and 18304 Wild Horse Creek Road, Unit A, St. Louis County Locator Numbers 19W 510215 and 19W 510194. Proposed use, a new fire station with living quarters and associated parking areas. Public sanitary sewer services planned to be extended to this site, Ward 1.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. On Friday morning, the Department of Planning received a letter that was enclosed in the packet of information for tonight's meeting from Assistant Fire Chief Cruz. Assistant Fire Chief Cruz is respectfully asking that the matter be postponed to a future date as the fire district continues to evaluate options as well as respond to questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The department offers no objection to the postponement and the matter is before the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. I'll open this up for discussion or a motion to postpone. Commissioner Helfrey.
Well, I was going to make a motion to postpone.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Mayor Boland?
I just have a question. Joe, did they indicate how much time they needed so that we could make the motion to postpone definitive as opposed to indefinite?
Mr. Mayor, their letter did not contain any specific date. When I responded back to Assistant Fire Chief Cruz, I noted that the earliest this matter could be back was January 19th of 2021. I did not receive a response to that email. So if you'd like, we could amend Ms. Helfrey's motion to the first meeting in January. And if it's not ready, then we could postpone again. It's really at the discretion of the commission.
I would just suggest up to 60 days and that gives flexibility.
Yeah, let's not set a date in case they don't have their answers over the holidays. Councilman Brost.
Uh, I guess on the, the same issue, but a little different topic. Joe, I did receive a voicemail at the office from a resident asking as to, um, I, I guess some of the demolition or maybe firemen practicing on the house and the general condition of the property. Is, is that something that should have been approved or is it, is it on hold right now or? You know, I drove by and it doesn't look very, I mean, it certainly would look nicer without the holes in the roof and that, but is that, how can I respond to that resident?
First and foremost, the fire district got a little ahead of the permitting process when they did some of their training at the site. And that was not authorized by the city. The fire district has followed up and the Department of Planning has issued the necessary authorizations for the demolition of the dwelling, its complete removal. I believe that demolition permit is now under review by St. Louis County. That county review is also, is inclusive of the Department of Health, which is why it takes a little longer. But I suspect that the fire district will be removing that structure sometime this month or early next month.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
All right. Commissioner Helfrey's motion.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Boland, seconds. Uh, we have a motion and a second to postpone for 60 days. We can do a voice vote on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're postponed. Uh, moving on, we have two items of new business. And we also have a speaker on this one. Mr. Newberry, will you read PZ 15 dash 19?
Response to communication from Kimberly Schneider, head of school, Chesterfield Montessori School regarding PZ 15 dash 19, Chesterfield Montessori School, 1400 Woodu Road, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017, which seeks the Planning and Zoning Commission's review and action on, on certain requested changes to an existing conditional use permit that governs a property for use as an outdoor education center for a private, not-for-profit elementary school with supporting storage structure, which is inclusive of a covered patio area, associated parking lot and bulk type restroom facility. This property is located on the southeast side of Bablo Park Drive, West of State Route 109. Locator number 20W 420051, street address 17950 Pond Bridge Road and zoned NU non-urban residence district and FP NU Floodplain Non-Urban Residence District with a conditional use permit. The requested change would allow, if granted, flexibility in the timeframes for installing the improvements associated with the required permit and associated site development plan process, processes, while still allowing the ongoing use of the subject property as an outdoor education center, Ward 3.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Tonight, the Department of Planning has prepared for your consideration a draft letter relative to the request Mr. Newberry just read into the record. As you may recall, in 2019, Chesterfield Montessori School came before the Planning and Zoning Commission and seeking a conditional use permit to use an approximately seven acre site that is located on State Route BA for an outdoor education center. In support of that use, Chesterfield Montessori School was planning on building a 1,700 square foot building, which would act as an outdoor classroom area, a storage area and shelter for the students if inclement weather started when visiting the site. The Chesterfield Montessori School also in the future was intending to build permanent restroom facilities on the site, but that was a future phase. And in lieu of that, during the initial phase, portable restroom facilities would be on the property behind the proposed building and screened from sight from all property lines as well as the abutting roadway, State Route BA. Other than that, the intent of the use of the property was for outdoor education, which in, for all intensive purposes, was the planting of additional landscaping and trees and understanding of nature by the students themselves by being onsite. And this particular site has part of Bonham Creek associated with it. The petitioner, again Chesterfield Montessori School, completed the site development plan process with the Planning and Zoning Commission and received approval and also received approval from the city's Architectural Review Board for the outbuilding. Everything was moving fairly well along until COVID-19. The pandemic has caused the petitioner to have some concerns about moving forward due to enrollments and other items related to such and is seeking from the Planning and Zoning Commission more time to complete the building and other improvements so as they can continue to utilize the site for the students of Chesterfield Montessori School. The department has reviewed this request and does feel it's appropriate. Given the physical characteristics of the site, there is no really other appropriate use than what is being proposed and has been authorized by the Planning and Zoning Commission, an outdoor education center. The department would note that the concern it has relates to the parking area not being installed off, off, off the roadway, so to speak, and onsite. And with those concerns, the department is recommending that the conditional use permit be modified to accommodate only two vehicle parking on the shoulder of Route BA and that during the timeframe when no off-street parking is provided, no special events be authorized. The intent of these two conditions is not to harm the school, but more so to provide protection to those that are visiting the school by limiting the number of cars that are parked on the shoulder of State Route BA and ensuring that the number of cars does not increase beyond two regardless of circumstances. The department believes it would be appropriate to accommodate this flexibility given the pandemic and the effects it's had across the country locally and locally as well. No one knew what would come from the pandemic and certainly it has changed almost every aspect of life. And I think having patience in this regard and allowing the limited use of the site to continue forward would be appropriate. In support of this request, the petitioner has screened the two portable restroom facilities so as they are not visible. The screening is made of a wood structure and they have covered the inside with a green fabric so as it's clearly not, the restrooms are clearly not visible from any portion of the roadway or surrounding properties. We believe this interim step is appropriate and further supports the department's recommendation to allow first leniency here in regards to the improvements. Mr. Chair, with that, the department will be available for any questions or comments regarding its recommendation once the floor is open for discussion or a motion is made. Again, I would note that Ms. Schneider, the head of school, is in attendance and had asked to speak on this matter as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Ms. Snyder, I will open it up for you for comment and then I will act on a motion here. So I'll give you a chance to speak.
I would just very much like to thank the commission for your consideration and Mr. Vunich and Mr. Newberry visited the site and allowed us to take them around so that they could see what, what we do there. Um, I don't really have anything to add. Um, I think that Mr. Vunich summarized very well. Our organization, like most organizations, is facing a lot of difficulty. And so to have this additional time and allow our students to continue to use the property in a way that's appropriate, that does not disturb the land, would be a great benefit to our school. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. I'll, I'll open this up for discussion or motion. Mayor Boland.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question. Joe, we had a comment that, that Travis sent to all of us by email from a neighboring landowner who was concerned, I believe essentially about what I would call extension of the scope of, of what has been approved in terms of potentially, you know, traffic coming in that from, from, from third parties that was not originally intended and, and I, I, I didn't get the point exactly, but I think the issue that, and, and if you understand it better than me, feel free to let us know. But I think the issue of the, the individual who owned the land that emailed us was concerned about if we approve this, you know, the, the, the intended use of this being extended beyond, maybe not just necessarily from a commercial standpoint, but extended beyond what was originally intended to allow a lot of traffic from outside the area. And so my question is, is there anything in approving the extension that would change what the commission has already approved relative to this? I think the answer to that is no, but I just want to have that made known publicly if that's the case.
You are correct, Mayor. Nothing that is being proposed in terms of the amendments to the existing permit actually relax or increase the intensity of use. And in fact, we are restricting the use more because of the lack of off-street parking. The shoulder on Route BA is wide enough, I think, to accommodate a safe parking situation. And the bus and vehicles that were there the day Mr. Newberry and I visited all exit onto the site, not onto the road. So there is a safety factor there that I think exists. And so again, no, we are not opening it, opening the use up to outside people other than those associated with the school and we are making it more restrictive.
Thank you very much.
Um, Mr. Vunich, I have one question. Under our CUP process, we have a time limit for action. What would the delay be and how many years if we want to allow this? Because we've with this being really the only applicable use on this site, I don't think we need to look at this on an annual basis. If it takes a couple of years to do this.
Well, the first renewal is in one year and then thereafter every three years. And I actually think it'd be appropriate to retain the one year and just get a status update from Ms. Schneider about how things are going. And if we need to extend it, we can extend it then. But I think keeping somewhat of an order to the review process is appropriate, even in this particular situation.
So when is the one year come up?
The initial permit was effective on December 2nd, 2019. So it's actually right now. And so we're kind of doing it.
So this is, this is it. So do we want to extend this out one more year for the next update?
Actually, we can wait three years because that's how the current permit reads.
Okay, that's kind of where I was headed with this. Does anybody have any other questions? Seeing none, um, let's, let's do a motion on the action, which is to allow for the delay of basic construction start. If I'm correct. Roll call vote, Mr. Newberry.
Well, you need a motion first.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Helfrey.
I make a motion to accept the department's recommendation.
Okay. And a second, Commissioner Beatty. Getting a little ahead of myself here. All right. Now we'll go ahead and vote on it. Mr. Newberry.
Mr. Cohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Broyles?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Helfrey?
Yeah.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Mayor Boland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Passes. Mr. Newberry, a minute here. And I'll have you read the next item under new business, 8B.
Approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission's action upon the city's five-year capital improvement plan as required by Chapter 89 of the Missouri revised statutes, which states this administrative body must review and act on this planning program so as to ensure consistency with the city's master plan. Oh, words.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Each year about this time, the Planning and Zoning Commission has presented the five-year capital improvement plan. Under state statute, any city Under state statute, any city that has a master plan. And zoning is required to review this capital improvement plan. Each year, the department presents the items that have been identified by the city council. And in this case, as in each year, the city council will formally. Act upon the five-year capital improvement plan a week from tonight. So your action on the plan will be presented to the city council before final action. I would note that Mr. Brown, our Director of Public Works is here tonight. And he may be able to speak to Ms. Allen, excuse me, Dr. Allen's comments regarding the Stricker Road sidewalk sections. Both those that were identified in three phases and then the one. Which I believe is by the Stricker Forest site. So with that, I would ask the permission of the chair to allow Mr. Brown to respond to those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. I'll turn it over to Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chair. I'd be glad to address any questions. That you have. The projects that were referenced. Are the Stricker sidewalk projects. That would complete sidewalks on Stricker Road. One is the project that we're currently working on that is. Essentially being reprogrammed for 2021. It's in the 2020 budget right now. That's the segment that runs along the, I'd say the south side of Stricker from Engelbrook East about 900 feet. That is on the Callahan property that's been. Discussed at city council already and is underway. The other projects, or I guess there's one more project that's an extension of that sidewalk segment that would complete. The construction of sidewalks on Stricker. So it continues from that point along Stricker. And there's a gap at Stricker Pines, but it goes through Idle Rock and then to the city limit, essentially the city of Ellisville. So that's the second Stricker sidewalk project that's included in the five-year capital improvement program. It'll continue that sidewalk on the same side all the way down to the Ellisville city limit. So there's two projects that we're proposing. One is underway. And it's currently in the 2020 budget. It's being reprogrammed to 2021. And then we have another segment. That's also on the five-year capital improvement program. Hopefully that explains the situation. Again, I'd be certainly be able to address any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I'll open it up for questions or discussion. Commissioner Beatty.
I did have one question. I don't see anything about connecting the trail in Brightleaf to the New Green Pines Park. I just wanted to make sure that was still on the docket for next year.
We will discuss that particular project next year and probably amend the five-year plan in 2021 for 2022. This particular upcoming fiscal year is one that is under a great deal of stress due to COVID-19, the pandemic. And the city council, along with city team members, had to make a number of difficult decisions. Mr. Beatty, we won't forget about it. It'll be a discussion topic at Planning and Parks Committee of City Council in 2021. And hopefully with their support, we can program it to start that process in 2022 with. Design and engineering and potentially construction within a year to two timeframe thereafter.
Thank you. Councilman Brost.
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering if Steve or Jim, if you guys, I think it might be nice to spend a couple of minutes and just update. This group as to, you know, the priorities and the discussions we're having at the council level.
Mayor Boland.
Or did you point to Steve?
Yeah.
I don't know what you did, Jim.
I'm happy to, but if Mayor Boland would like to, to go ahead and say, I'll let him do that.
Microphone.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Councilmember Brost is referencing the strategic planning that our city does every five years. At a council level and we have just begun that. And we have identified eight priority, top priority goals for the city. And we're getting ready to basically start looking at how to plug in the numbers and. And the prioritization of the sub-goals within each of the major goals. And rural internet is actually at number one. You know, and, and that was, these were voted upon by each council member and that one won by quite a large margin, actually. And so those, or that process is ongoing and I anticipate. That it will probably be done within the next 90 to 120 days, probably 90 days. And we will provide the commission with the final decisions in terms of the strategic plan. Developed by the council, but that's where we are at the moment.
Thank you. Commissioner Helfry.
Well, I guess I'm just a little confused at what exactly we are voting for. Is this, am I misunderstanding, Mayor? Did you say that this is not actually the final plan? That this, that you are working on it and there will be a final plan coming? Because if so, then I guess I'm not quite sure. I'm sorry, what we're supposed to do with this information. Somebody help.
Yeah. If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor Boland.
That is a great question. And so this may be a question for Joe or and/or city attorney Young. But if there is no statutory or other legal requirement that the city pass on this tonight. I would actually recommend that this be postponed until the counts of the commission has the benefit. Of seeing what the council has decided relative to the five-year strategic plan, which I think may be the intent of your question. And so I guess I'll ask that question to the city attorney or Joe Vunich. Is this something that is obligated, that the commission is obligated to vote on tonight? Or if not, can it be postponed until such time as the commission has the benefit of reviewing? What the council has developed relative to the five-year strategic plan for the city.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer to the city attorney.
Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the commission. So the process that we're dealing with now is under the statutory requirement. That public facilities of the city cannot be constructed until it's been submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So to the extent there are any public facilities within that plan that have not already been approved. By the Planning and Zoning Commission, they cannot be constructed or financed until such time as the Planning and Zoning Commission asks. So my recommendation would be to move forward with what's presented with the understanding that it is subject to amendment at any time during the year.
Mayor Boland.
So I'll make a motion. It's going to be slightly different than that, that the. The plan of expenditure be approved by the commission for only those items that are statutorily required. With the remaining items to be reviewed by the commission, once it has the benefit of seeing what the council develops relative to the five-year strategic plan.
Commissioner Helfry.
Okay, Mayor Boland, does that mean that once they have finalized it, it's going to come back in front of us? Because I don't like the idea of, I don't feel comfortable voting on something that isn't in its final form. It's not very fair.
One comment I would make is that. And Attorney Young has his hand up, but it's for construction. So we are going to see all of these things come back regardless of this as an outline. Is basically what this is. So, Mr. Young, is that my understanding correct?
That's actually the point I was going to make is that you are not obligating any funds for anything, only the city council can do that. And if the city council comes back with a different list of facilities for construction. They can submit it back. They'll submit that back to you for consideration.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Mayor Boland.
Yeah, so that is, that is true in terms of the expense of the dollars, but in terms of getting into the mix of. The, the commission approving of a plan tonight in totality. That could potentially end up being inconsistent. All I'm saying is, and this may be more of. I guess, well, procedural rather than anything, but, but I. The intent of my motion is simply to give the commission the ability to look at those expenses that are not statutorily required to be. Decided upon affirmatively tonight, even though all of them will come back to the commission. But in terms of whatever is in this report, it just gives the commission flexibility to not obligate itself tonight. If it wants to change things based upon what the council comes up with relative to the five-year strategic plan. So that's all my motion is intended to do. So I think maybe Commissioner Helfry and I are cross talking each other. I'm trying to, what my intent is, is to accommodate exactly what I think she's. She referenced earlier, which is approving of something that the commission doesn't have the ability to know of tonight. And so my motion would give the commission that variability, I think.
Okay, then I'll second that motion.
And I think we can work that out. Mr. Vunich, if the city changes or council changes, then you'll bring it back to us as an update.
And just as a point of information, and certainly I can be corrected on this. The city council will be receiving this exact same five-year plan Monday night for consideration. And so they will be charged with the same responsibility, knowing that they're doing a strategic planning effort and that things might change.
Mr. Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going on with what Mr. Vunich just said, in fact, this five-year plan. Received its first reading at the last council meeting. So the meeting that takes place one week from today on December the 14th. Will in fact be the second reading on the municipal budget, which does include the five-year capital improvement plan. But as the mayor pointed out, we will also be discussing at the work session of the meeting one week from today. The five-year plan, the strategic plan with the sub-goals as well as any, any projects that have any. Any funding attached to it. And by that I mean any grants or that sort of thing. But the, the council has already seen this five-year plan once already, as presented by Mr. Vunich here tonight.
Thank you. One comment that I wanted to get in here was that. My understanding of the city's process is that they would deal and have clearance for all the environmental concerns that Dr. Allen raised. For the area where the sidewalk would go. So as long as that's. Published and identified, the phase two, you know, any remedial action, all clear and testing that we would not be putting ourselves in harm's way as a city. Dealing with the sidewalk. So I'm assuming that's taken care of.
Absolutely doing that. I believe the phase one was just completed, so.
Yeah, so I just wanted to get that out there so that Dr. Allen, if she's listening, is aware of that. That being said, Mr. Beatty.
Oh, just one other question. Hearing about the deferrals, is the Manchester Road Trail still planning on happening next year?
Mr. Brown.
Um, the answer to that would be yes.
Okay. As that's a safe route for my kids to get to school, I've had a personal interest in that.
That's, that's great. Glad to hear it.
Thank you.
Always, that's always good. All right, we have a. Amendment to the motion. We'll do a voice vote on that.
Just a motion. Just, it was just a motion.
Just a motion, okay. So let's go ahead and do roll call vote then.
Commissioner Broyles.
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty.
Yes.
Commissioner Helfry.
Yes.
Commissioner Coen.
Yes.
Chair Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Brost.
Yes.
Mayor Boland.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item passes. Moving on, we have. Two other items. Mr. Newberry, are you reading X? Dot A. Work program.
City of Wildwoods Planning and Zoning Commission's work program for the calendar year 2021 is set forth in its amended bylaws, which were adopted in 2019. Oh, words.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Mr. Vunich.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as is referenced in the report prepared by the department on this item. In 2019, the bylaws of the Planning and Zoning Commission were amended. And one of the amendments related to an adoption of a work program for each upcoming calendar year, in this case, 2021. And so tonight, the department is presenting the work program for 2021. And the work items are divided into three categories in terms of priority, high, medium, and low. Under the high category, a couple of the items are carryovers from 2020. And that relates to the town center update process that's being led by the town center update team. And then the watershed erosion task force. Both of those are still underway, which is the reason why they are being carried over into the next fiscal year. 2021. Also, recently, the Planning and Parks Committee of City Council identified our tree preservation and restoration code as a priority. And so that has been added as well. There are a couple of other new items relating to activities that the Planning and Zoning Commission is being requested to be considered. And those relate to the special circumstances overlay district. And then as we went through our consideration of permitted uses and all the R, C, and M districts of the zoning ordinance. An item came out of that. So tonight, the department believes it's captured the items. That the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to carry over as well as those new items that the commission is being requested to consider. Therefore, the department is requesting consideration of the work program in its draft form for final passage tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. I'll open for discussion or a motion. Mayor Boland.
I think a motion to approve with the understanding, I did send an email to everyone this last week relative to. Having an executive session with our city attorney regarding solar panels. I don't know that it rises to the level of being identified on this list, so I'll make a motion to approve as presented, but I just wanted to make note of that.
Thank you. I need a second. Commissioner Broyles, second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's. Do a roll call vote on this. Mr. Newberry.
Commissioner Beatty.
Yes.
Commissioner. Helfry.
Yes.
Commissioner Coen.
Yes.
Commissioner Broyles.
Yes.
Chair Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Brost.
Yes.
Mayor Boland.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our. Final action item is the Planning and Zoning Commission's calendar. 2021. There's nothing to read here. So Mr. Vunich, I'll let you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As has been tradition, each year at its end. The Department of Planning prepares a meeting schedule for 2021, or the next year in this case, 2021. As you can see, in January, our only meeting is January 19, Tuesday, after the Dr. King holiday. In July, given that 4th of July will be celebrated on July 5th, we will be skipping that meeting. And then in December of 2021, we will only have one meeting, again, the first Monday of the month. Thereafter, all the other months have two meetings as scheduled. And we hope you find the calendar acceptable and would request a motion and a second and voice vote to adopt it.
Motion to accept.
Okay, I need a second. Councilman Brost. All right, so. We can do voice. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Passes?
Thank you.
Does the chair have any, or I don't have any closing remarks, other than this has been a great year, so. Does Mayor, or Mr. Vunich, you have a closing remark.
Certainly. It's been an interesting year. I think the Planning and Zoning Commission exceeded all expectations given COVID-19. So the Department of Planning does want to thank you all for your service to the city. I often say that we can't do anything without you. So your participation is critical to a vibrant and healthy Wildwood. And we want to thank you for that effort, particularly this year again, given all the circumstances that we've had to work around and all the difficulties that COVID-19 caused. You've done an exemplary job and we want you to know that from staff. Also, Mr. Newberry, Ms. Arnett, and I would like to wish you the best of the upcoming holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing, oh, Commissioner Broyles.
I just want to echo the remarks that you said and write back at you. It's marvelous to work with such a talented and grateful leadership in this community. Thank you.
All I can say, it starts with the mayor and our city council and kind of heads down to us. So we've got good leaders there. Thank you.
The Zoom meeting platform has been excellent as well, so thank you for putting this together. Seeing no further discussion, entertain a motion to adjourn. Councilman Brost, second. Aye, Commissioner Helfry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions. Thank you very much and happy holidays.
Happy holiday, everyone.
Happy holidays.